7:04, I'm going to call a meeting to order, the July 20th, 2020 regular meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education. Welcome to all of you, those we can see and those we can't. Appreciate your participation in the board meeting tonight. This evening, our agenda includes a discussion of the reopening plan. The board has invited guest speakers to take part in that presentation by offering brief five-minute presentations from the perspective of their particular area of expertise. Out of courtesy and respect for those individuals, time and schedules, I'm going to propose that the board votes to move Agenda Item 4.3.1 and 4.3.1 in order so that that discussion can be had at this time. Do I have a motion for that?
I will motion the Agenda Item forward.
Dan Cowan's moving that 4.3.1 and 4.3.1 being moved to this spot on the agenda. Do I have a second?
I seconded that.
Jeff Townsend has seconded that. So I'm just going to call a roll if you can vote when I call you. Dan Cowan, in favor?
I'm in favor, yes.
David Ross?
Yes.
Jeff Townsend?
Yes.
Megan? Jennifer? Mike Strampler?
Yes.
Jeff Hughes?
Yes.
Joyce, are you on our call? Joyce Shavers, I see you.
Thank you, sorry, I had trouble.
That's okay. We're moving the Agenda Item on the reopening up. Do you vote in favor of that?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. So we will move on to the reopening plan. First item on the agenda for that are our guest speakers. So the first person I would like to introduce is Dr. Allison Galvani, Professor of Epidemiology at the Yale School of Public Health and Director of the Center for Infectious Disease Modeling and Analysis. Dr. Galvani, I hope you're on.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Is my video working as well, or is it just audio?
Audio only.
You, but that doesn't mean that you're not here. Oh, no, I don't see you, you're just in A.
Oh, well, I'm happy to just go ahead with, or should I try to get the video?
The little camera on your screen, if you hit the little camera, it's probably red right now. If you click on it, it should bring you to the screen.
Thank you, Bob.
Oh, let's see. Does that work?
No, we do not see you. We can hear you fine, but...
I'll just go ahead. So, yes, thank you for inviting me to speak about this important topic. As we just mentioned, I'm the Director of the Yale Center for Infectious Disease Modeling and Analysis, and I also hold the endowed Chair in Epidemiology at the Yale School of Public Health. In my career of more than 20 years, I have used mathematical analytical techniques to evaluate the transmission dynamics of many infectious diseases and optimal strategies to mitigate risks. For the last six months, my team and I have been focused on COVID-19. There are five key points I would implore the board to consider. Number one, this disease has already killed more than 140,000 people in America. Most of these people have been over 60 years or had pre-existing conditions. However, healthy young people have also become gravely affected and have died. And although an infected person is more likely to recover than not, many people who recover still have persistent complications that affect their lungs, heart, or even their brain. And we do not yet know if these conditions will be lifelong and if ever having had COVID-19 will become a pre-existing condition that may jeopardize reasonably priced health care for people who were ever infected with COVID-19. Point number two, the guidance to stay six feet apart and to wear masks reduces risk, but many people have been, who have been infected, say they have followed such guidance. We know that droplets from a sneeze can travel over 20 feet, and if folks are frequently adjusting or removing their mask, they may actually be transferring the virus from their hands to their face. And the idea that children could go throughout the entire day without touching their mask is implausible. Some of you may have heard about summer camp in Missouri that exceeded all of the CDC recommendations. However, they were shut down last week when more than 80 infections arose, and already there has been a death of one of those infections, a teacher. Point number three, so an unusual aspect of COVID-19 is that the peak of infectiousness occurs during the pre-symptomatic phase. So the average incubation period prior to symptoms is about five days, the last two of which constitute the highly infectious pre-symptomatic stage. In one of our peer-reviewed studies, we found that the majority of transmission is attributable to people who are not exhibiting symptoms, from a combination of the pre-symptomatic stage and from infections that remain asymptomatic. So not only are people infectious when they are not symptomatic, the pre-symptomatic phase is actually when they are the most infectious. Therefore, temperature checks are ineffective at curbing COVID-19 transmission. Furthermore, younger people, although they're at lower risk of serious COVID outcomes, they're disproportionately responsible for symptomless transmissions. Point number four I'd like to make is that the virus is viable for much longer on surfaces and in the air at lower temperatures and at lower humidity. Therefore, as catastrophic as the crisis is now, it will likely only become worse as the temperature and humidity progressively fall in the autumn and winter. So, point five is just my overall professional opinion. I have little doubt that COVID-19 transmission will quickly become extensive in schools that reopen in the fall. Chances are that people will die as a result, and many more will have long-term damage to their lungs and heart. The deaths associated with school reopenings will predominantly be among the teachers, parents, and elderly relatives. I have three young children myself, and I appreciate the priority that education is. However, I will not be sending my children to school. I believe it would be tantamount to saying that my child's in-person education is more important than the lives of their teachers. In my opinion, teachers should not be obligated to choose between their lives and their livelihoods, and I believe that school resources should be devoted to making the remote learning experience as effective as possible during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, I'm happy to take any questions.
I think what we'll do is we'll have all our presenters, Dr. Galvani, if that's okay, and then we'll open it up to public comment if you're available to stay, that would be great.
Sure.
Lynn, I thought we were going to have questions from the board before the public comment.
Yes, that is correct. Opportunity for the board discussion first. Yep, that's part of the agenda. Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Dr. Martin Koldorf, Bio-Statistician and Professor of Population Medicine at Harvard Medical School and Brigham and Women's Hospital. Dr. Koldorf, thank you for being willing to speak to us tonight. I think I see you there.
My pleasure, and thank you for inviting me. I work, among other things, on COVID-19 together with the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta and the New York City Health Department. So I'm going to talk about the four items. The first three are the risk to students, the risk to teachers and other staff, the risk to family members, and then the fourth is more the, what the end game is. So if we look at first, the risk to students. In the United States, there has been 31, so far 31 deaths in COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic. We can contrast that with the number of children who died in influenza, which is 101, and there's over 150 who died in pneumonia without COVID. And that's among about 11,000 total deaths. So for children, COVID-19 is less risky than the regular influenza season. Of course, for older people, it's the very opposite, it's much more than influenza. Now, of course, in the United States, all the states closed their schools, so maybe these numbers are low because the schools were closed. So to answer that question, we have to look at the one country in the Western world who did not close the school, was Sweden. And they didn't close, so 1.8 billion Swedish children were either in daycare or in primary school or middle school during the whole pandemic. And during this time, the number of deaths among these children in Sweden was zero, so not a single death among 1.8 billion children through the pandemic. Eight children were affected, so they had to go to the ICU, but no deaths. So in summary, for children, COVID-19 is a very low-risk disease. It's not zero, but it's very low risk, and much lower than a regular influenza season. If we then look at teachers, of course, we again have to look at the place where the schools were open to have some understanding of what the risk for teachers are. So we have to again look at Sweden, and during the pandemic in Sweden, the teachers had approximately the same risk as other professions. The relative risk for primary and middle school teachers is 1.1 with a confidence interval that includes one, so it's not statistically significantly different from other professions. And if we compare the number of diagnosed COVID cases among the primary and middle schools and the that were open versus the secondary schools, the high schools that actually closed in Sweden, it's slightly less in the high school, but not very much, it's just marginally. So for the teachers and staff, there's a big difference in risk depending on age. So a teacher that's somewhere between 20 and 50 years old has very low risk of COVID, while the teachers and staff above 60 years old are at very high risk. If we look at the Connecticut numbers of deaths per age, there has, among, in those in their 60s, there has been one death for every 800 people in that age group. That's much less compared to the 80-plus year old, where there's been one death for every 62 people. But it's much more than, it's 10 times more than those who are in their 40s, where there's one death for every 8,000, and in the 30s for one death for every 21,000, and for those in the 20s, one death for every 116,000 people. So there's an enormous difference in risk by age for COVID-19, and this is not unique to Connecticut, this is sort of a worldwide phenomenon. So it makes, I think it's very important that the schools protect the older teachers, certainly those who are above 60, and maybe those who are in the high 50s also, because they are really at risk of this disease, and if they can work from home during, for example, supporting other teachers or during tutoring, or helping with families who wants to put their kids in homeschooling, that will help save lives and protect them. The third item is what is the risk to family members of students as well as teachers? And the only data I've found on that is also from Sweden, of course, because it was the only country that didn't close the schools. And the major risk there is, of course, for those who are in their 70s and 80s. So they did a study looking at those who were in the 70s, and if you live with somebody else who is in the 70s but nobody below the age 66, then you have baseline risk of one. And if you live alone, you have higher risk, both if you are COVID-19 and for other causes, about the same. But if you live with somebody that's below age 65 in working age, who has not retired yet, then the risk for other causes, other than COVID, is about the same, but the risk for COVID-19 is higher, it's about 80% higher. And if you live with somebody below age 60 plus, a child below age 16, you also have more risk for COVID-19 of about 1.5, 1.6. So in this study, there was no more risk from being, living with a child and somebody below 65 versus living only with somebody below 65 but not a child. But there are increased risks for people. So I think it's important that, to ensure their safety, it's important that preferably they should not live with the younger people, or if they do, they have to be, they are at increased risk and they have to take care not to be infected. And that's not just through school infections, but also supermarkets or other things. But of course, the number of students who are living with a grandparent or a parent that's above age 70 is very small, but they should try to find some special arrangement as possible. So the last and fourth items that I want to talk to you about is what is the end game? Because if we close the schools, we will have the same situation again in the spring, should we open or close the schools then? So the question is then, do we close the schools until this whole epidemic is over, which is not going to happen until we have a vaccine, which we don't know when that will arrive, if it will arrive, or when we have sufficient number of people in the community that's infected so that we reach herd immunity? And that we don't know either, we have no idea how much is required for herd immunity. So we have to look not only at what's going on in the last few months, we have to look also at the end game, the long term, and so that we just don't postpone progress into the future, but to sort of deal with the pandemic as a whole. So those are my thoughts, and of course, it's for you to decide what you do, and what I can do is sort of just present some of these numbers. And I sent a one-pager with tables with these numbers as well as citations to the data so that any of you can sort of check the numbers in more detail. Well, thank you.
Martin, we've had your one-pager up on the screen during the time you've been speaking, so everybody had a chance to look at that data while you were speaking.
Oh, perfect, thank you, because I have one version up, so I didn't see what was on the screen, but thank you, Bob. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Koldorf. Perhaps that data, Bob, can be added to e-meeting?
Yes.
Under this particular part of the agenda?
Yep, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Shannon Martinello, local pediatric specialist in the New Haven area and medical advisor for Beecher Road School and the Woodbridge School District. Dr. Martinello, are you with us? I saw you earlier, Dr. Martinello.
Does Carl need to unmute, maybe?
Shannon, you might have your phone muted. We might have lost her, I don't see her.
This is Sherri Storyguard. Shannon is my partner, and I'm texting her right now to find out what's going on.
Thank you, Dr. Storyguard. In the meantime...
Shannon says, "Got bumped off, says server down, trying to log back in on three devices."
Okay, so she can take her time, and we'll have, in the meantime, Dr. William Donald, Manager of Commissioning Services from Van Zelm Engineers, who has extensive experience in building facilities management and building automation systems. I think I saw you earlier, Bill. Yep, there you are. You have to hit unmute.
Yep.
Welcome, Bill.
Okay, thank you for having us. I represent Van Zelm Engineers, which is a mechanical engineering firm located in Farmington, Connecticut, and we've been in business since 1930. We are currently providing professional engineering services for Beecher School related to the HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems within the school. Just to give you a little quick overview of what we're currently charged with or working on, the school recently invested in an upgrade of their HVAC control system in the building, so one of our current tasks right now is we're in the testing phase of that to make sure all the equipment within the building is functioning as intended and as designed. One of the good features of the control system upgrade has been we have the ability now to better monitor the conditions within the classroom spaces throughout the school. We are doing that, space condition monitoring, basically on a daily basis at the moment, and we are making adjustments to the system as we go throughout this sort of testing exercise. Part of the other task that we are assisting with is, you know, related to the COVID-19, the school reopening guidelines. So we're currently assisting with identifying changes that can be made to the HVAC system in order to comply with the reopening guidelines. And some of this, without getting into too much of the boring detail, but it's basically looking at things like upgrades to air filtration and outdoor air increases and so on. So there's a number of items that are currently in progress, excuse me, as we speak. To that point, we have another walkthrough scheduled for this coming Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. to, once again, tour the school with the school personnel to discuss some of the strategies that I just mentioned. And the other component of Van Zelm's involvement is when changes related to the guidelines, the COVID reopening guidelines, get implemented, we are planning to continue to assist with evaluating the performance of the HVAC systems, particularly throughout seasonal, you know, fall, winter, spring, summer, as basically an assurance that the interior conditions are suitable at all times for the students and staff. So that's kind of a quick, you know, very broad overview of our particular role as the professional engineer for the project.
Thanks, Bill, I appreciate that. If you could just hang on the line, once the board might have some questions for you, I'd appreciate that as well. I saw Dr. Martinello.
I'm, sorry, we're having Wi-Fi issues here. Apologize.
Happy to have you here, Dr. Martinello.
Thanks, good to see you. Okay, so I just wanted to say thanks for giving me the opportunity to chat this evening and add my thoughts and concerns and some recommendations to the opening of the school year. A little bit about my background, I am a resident of Woodbridge, I've had four kids go through the Beecher Road School, and I am a pediatrician in town, I'm the school health advisor, and basically I see my job as, you know, looking to advocate for the health and well-being of children and their families. I am the daughter of an elementary educator who is also a cancer survivor, I am the niece of an elementary educator who has a lung disorder. My cousin and my aunt are teachers, they have type 1 diabetes, and many friends of teachers with pre-existing health conditions, and their health and safety are extremely important to me, as is the education of my children. Tonight, I just wanted to chat a little bit solely about Beecher. I'm not speaking to, you know, recommendations for middle and high school age students, I think the agenda's a little bit different at the older age groups. I am not speaking to other school systems and what other schools and elementary schools around our surrounding communities and state and country have access to. This is specific to Beecher Road School. Nothing about COVID has been easy for children or families or educators. There's obviously socioeconomic disparity, racial disparity, family stress, juggling working from home, and keeping our kids online with school and engaged. The mental health of all ages is suffering, and it's been a strain on our health care system and the economy during a time of societal injustice, and this does place a burden on my heart, quite honestly. COVID has brought to the limelight, you know, our social determinants of health that we need to, as a country, sort of reckon with, and linking health care to employment and social services to schools does put a burden on our school systems. COVID isn't going away, vaccines may be possible but not likely for this upcoming school year. Waiting for herd immunity is going to be a tall order. We've had overall, despite the crazy numbers that we all see on the news every night, the overall population has had a very low percent of Americans overall who have been directly affected and infected with COVID. Beecher Road is, however, uniquely situated, and we do have many positive things working in our favor. We do have, as you heard, an updated, high-quality HVAC system, we have lots of outdoor space, we have a robust PTO, community faculty board, with many highly educated and highly capable people who can put all their hands on deck to help us with this. We are also situated nicely in that, as we heard earlier, you know, in terms of risk, which will never be zero, even if we close schools for a year, the risk will not be zero to our Woodbridge community, but the children that attend Beecher Road School are in the lower risk groups overall in terms of their risk of serious illness, in terms of their risk of death, and in terms of, most importantly, I think, their risk of transmitting virus in that asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic state. Despite all of that, it would be dismissive and irresponsible to discount a 1% to 2% risk of serious illness in the adult population working at Beecher, and I feel that 100% of our students and staff are indispensable. We have to, you know, if we have to, and we are mandated to reopen in person, I think that we may... I think that we may be sort of the best of the worst-case scenario here. Like, we are in a reasonably good situation for Beecher Road School. However, that doesn't mean we don't need multiple layers of mitigation. As my surgical colleagues would say, the solution to pollution is dilution. We need to maximize airflow and we need to maximize the distance between students and teachers. And for sure, we need to maximize the distance between the adult community within the school building. Adults are more likely to infect each other than to be infected from young children. So I do agree with some of the comments by my colleague Sherry Storyguard the other evening that if we can maximize those outdoor spaces, that would be great. There are schools worldwide who do fully outdoor schools year-round, even in cold climates, and it's possible. Also think a little more outside time. You know, in the age of lots of screen time for all of our kids, a little more outdoor time would not be bad. An author that I like, Richard Louve, talks about children and nature deficit disorder, like outdoor learning, fresh air is actually good for our brains. Movement is good for learning. So I think we need to take, you know, full advantage of that if we are mandated to be back in school. Space will be a key. Learning appropriate hand hygiene, learning appropriate masking. All of these things are important. Cohorting will be important. You know, as best we can, we need to try to, as logistically difficult as it would be, if we can get families who all live in the same area or like families on one street who can have their kids also be co-horted in school and also be providing their own to-and-from school rides, that might actually be a good way to cut down on bus use and keep sort of small cohorts of kids so that if there is an issue with someone having been exposed, we've got, we sort of know who all their close contacts are and it will be easier. Masks are a must. There is lots of misinformation out there about masks. There are very few medical contraindications to masks. And I would argue that if someone is medically contraindicated to wearing a mask, they probably should not be in the school's setting for this upcoming year. Allergies, asthma, those are not contraindications to mask. And so we need to really make the default be masking. All of this supposes that our community rates are still low. If our rates in the community go up, whether it's just in Woodbridge, in New Haven County, in Connecticut, in New England, you know, that is something that, you know, we can't argue with. And, you know, it may make it impossible to talk about any in-school learning. But right now, our numbers actually look reasonably good as far as, you know, this area. I do think, sort of as a last, you know, a last shout-out here, that if we are going to talk about children being physically present in school with our teaching staff, it is imperative that we have either an unofficial or possibly even an official contract between families and this. We must keep our kids home if they are sick. We cannot give them Motrin and send them to school. We must make sure that if we travel to a highly, you know, endemic area, that we are honest about the school and maintain those quarantines when we come back. If we have an exposure outside the school, if we happen to visit, you know, an uncle and three days later find out that he's positive for COVID, that must be disclosed. And we must be sure that we are quarantining and, you know, and taking those precautions. You know, the having school open is a privilege, but with that comes great responsibility for the members of our community. We do need to, you know, to make sure that, you know, we are being good followers of science. We are masking. We are socially distancing. It may mean saying no to our kids for some things, like sleepover birthday parties and having a big Chuck E. Cheese extravaganza. Those are things we probably cannot do in a pandemic if we want to keep our school open. So I think, you know, ideally, we'd have some magic wands that would make this virus go away. That's not going to happen. I think if we are mandated to be in school, present, you know, with faculty and staff, I think we're just going to have to come together as a community and really make sure that we can do this in the most safe way possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Martinello. Bob, I would ask that Dr. Martinello's PowerPoint also be put in e-meeting for public viewing.
Yes, we've taken care of that. We've, Marcia has it and that will happen.
Great, thank you. Okay. So now we're going to move on to, Bob, you have some comments and then we'll have board discussion.
Sure. We're just putting that up on the screen. So I'm going to just provide, I am not going to go through the whole presentation that I did last Wednesday, but I am going to just forward, go to the next slide, which is just simply, what have we done and what have we continued to work at since last Wednesday? So as you know, we met on Wednesday, July 15. We've had only three working days since that time, including getting ready for this board meeting. And I just wanted to let you know that where we are right now is that the next morning after the board meeting, we had an opportunity to bring our reopening committee together to do some reflecting on the special meeting and all the public comment and the actual presentation. And we've come up with a number of things that we confirmed in our minds that we need to continue to follow up with and we've started to take action on. One is to make sure that we have fully communicated to staff and parents about the reopening plan. We have staff information sessions planned for this Wednesday. And I am planning to send all parents in Beecher Road School notice of a parent livestream webinar that I will hold on Thursday for all parents to be more fully informed about this plan. Parents do have access, obviously, to the reopening PowerPoint, this PowerPoint and the plan that we've constructed, the draft, but we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to do that more in a live fashion. We are, in terms of, since Wednesday, we have been, again, told from the State Department's perspective that they will be providing more information to us regarding the parent choice option of having their child stay home for distance learning if we are all coming back to the school site. So we are still waiting for that information from them. We are continuing to make final edits for our overall plan that we have, which will be submitted at the end of this week. And perhaps most importantly right now, we are starting to operationalize the plan. The plan itself is a very, very, it looks at it from a very large perspective. Although that plan has a lot of detail and a lot of indicators, as you know, if you've gone through all the pages. But now we're getting into the operationalization of this plan, which is really bringing our staff together with our administration. We'll be starting to do that in terms of planning the details of a robust distance learning model that we can learn from what we implemented in the spring using parent, faculty, and staff feedback. We are going to be looking closer and constructing the more details of our hybrid model. And third, and is equally important, developing in more detail the fine protocols and procedures that are required for movement into the building, out of the building, onto the bus, out of the bus, from place to place, all with safety in mind. The other things that we are continuing to work towards in our scheduling is determining the staffing that we will have for the fall. As you know, while there is great concern, obviously, from the student perspective that parents have about their child and whether they'll be in the building or not and what that means, there's equal concerns for staff. We want to make sure that everybody's protected and we also need to hear each person's individual situation if they have a concern or a need to talk to us about that. We are also looking very closely right now, and I always want to linger on this one for a moment, at the school calendar, the professional learning and the professional preparation that will take, it will take to get ourselves ready for the first day of school onsite. And also, the potential of some policy changes. All this is coming very, very rapidly. The school calendar. It's mostly the State Department. Just midweek last week said that you can take three of your student days and turn them into teacher days only at the beginning of the year in order to make sure you have, you're doing everything you can to make sure your staff is prepared, that the rooms are prepared, that all the details that need to be in place are done. So I will talk about the calendar in a moment, which really links into professional learning and professional preparation policies. We will be getting some confirmation tomorrow as to what we need to do with anything regarding some policy additions or changes. And I will be in touch with Megan Genovese, our Board of Ed Policy Subcommittee Chair in terms of the potential, if necessary, of scheduling a policy meeting in the next few days. Also, and these are all things that were discussed at our reopening committee, to one extent or another. And we've also talked about the follow-up survey that we need to make at some point on or around August 1 that would help us to determine in a more finite way, the plans for parents for their children to return or for them to take the option to stay with distance learning. I also want to mention that some of you may have listened to a press release, a press conference today by the governor. He had the Education Commissioner on. I was able to listen to part of that today. It was from 4 to 5 o'clock. And they are making some plans to, obviously, follow the transmission rates very, very closely over the next days and weeks. And probably in the, closer to the second week of August, we thought that was going to be August 1. That's why I put it on this PowerPoint. But since I put that on there, things have changed again. It looks like it's closer to the second week of August. There will be some confirmation by the state of what we're aiming for, which is bringing in-person learning back. Or if there's any change to make that a hybrid or distance learning, there'll be more information around that time. I do want to also tell you, just on the side, there's other things that are going on. We are looking at some of our administration going to workshops outside the district to help us with the concept of acceleration. We don't want to just think about remediating students from last year. We want to think of accelerating learning since the three months in the spring were different, different experience. I've been in contact with the Town Hall last week in regards to helping to bring Beth Heller and Tony Genovese up to date about the challenges we have, both programmatically and potentially budget-wise. And finally, the state has asked every superintendent in the route Connecticut to submit some data as well as some potential rough estimates as to, in a worst-case scenario, what kind of expenses we might be incurring beyond what our normal budget might be. But we've done that as well. I do want to come back to the calendar for a moment and I want to just be able to plant this thought and seed with the board. I sent this to you on Saturday on my weekly update. And I also sent you an email this evening, this afternoon. And that is regarding our calendar. We really believe strongly that we want to make sure we're prepared, that our staff is prepared, that our kids are prepared, and that we are doing everything for a smooth reopening and re-entry. And again, just to, again, review what I'm thinking and what most districts are doing. I know that Bethany and I have, Bethany, our neighboring school district, and I have spoke about this. Orange and Amity, I'm not exactly sure how this is going to play out for them at this point. But we believe that we really need to transform those first three student days, which is August 26, 27, and 28 in our original schedule, to transform those days into teacher preparation, PD days, to do all the things that we need to do. In a normal year, we have three days. That never seems like enough in a normal year. This is nothing, this is anything but normal this year. So we're looking at transforming those three days into PD days, which the state has advocated for and approved, as long as it happens at that point in the year. And then for us to begin the school year, the week of August 31, with half of our students coming on August 31, Monday, half of our students coming September 1, Tuesday, and then all students beginning on September 2. And everybody will be back in. I also look at that first week, as Bethany is as well, the value of having all of those days, August 31 through September 4, as being minimum days, students being here till about 1 o'clock, as you know, the minimum schedule that we normally have. This would allow, A, for students to get acclimated with wearing a mask, obviously, for a full day. This would allow them to just for four hours versus six hours. Also, it allows teachers and staff and administration to follow up in the afternoon to have a chance to talk, to strategize, and to determine, how did it go in the morning? How can we get around some of the challenges we didn't plan on? The different obstacles that we may have to figure out. So I'll leave that with the board. I'm sure there'll be some conversation about that. But at our next board meeting or at an earlier board meeting, we'll need to take some action on that as we move forward. I think I'm going to stop there. I do have other pages of the presentation from last week, but I will not go into that now unless there's questions later that we want to revisit those. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sounding like we may have to plan an additional board meeting to address some of those things in the month of August. So we'll keep that on the back burner for now. So we're going to move into board comment. Dan, do you have any questions or comments of any of our speakers or presenters or Bob?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for the presenters. The first question I'm going to extract is to Ms. Giovanni. I don't know if she's still on the line.
Dr. Galvani.
Dr. Galvani. All right, well, while we're waiting on Dr. Galvani, perhaps I'll address my questions to Dr. Kildoff. Are you on the line still?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I'm wondering, you cited another country several times. And I'm wondering if there's anything physically different, socially different found in that population? Oh, Sweden.
Sorry. I guess, sorry, I just stepped away and I was told I was asked a question.
You know what, Dr. Galvani? We'll go back to you if you could just hang on for one minute.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything physically or socially different found in that population that would make them different than the United States? That would explain the variation, like their variation?
The obvious difference in terms of when the epidemic arrived to the countries and those things, which is different from every country. But in terms of the effect of schools, I don't think so in terms of the difference of risk by age. That's uniform throughout the whole world. When the schools were open in Sweden, there were sort of standard hand hygiene measures in place. Children who were six were told to stay home. There were no masks used in Sweden. So it was fairly normal how the schools were operating.
Okay. My question for Dr. Giovanni, now that she's back.
Also, Sweden, Sweden had much higher mortality than comparable countries, COVID-19 mortality.
So if we compare the overall mortality in Sweden with Connecticut per population, Connecticut has had more than twice the mortality versus Sweden. So, and if you look at the European countries, Sweden is about in the middle. Some countries have more deaths per population than Sweden and some have less deaths per population than Sweden.
Well. Compared to the U.S. overall, Sweden's, you know, despite all this mortality we're having in the U.S. per capita, their mortality was 40% higher than the U.S. overall. And also, compared to Denmark, they were, I just had it, I think it was six times higher. And, let's see. Six times higher, too. So that's, you know, 600% higher. Right, okay. So the most comparable countries to Sweden would be Norway, Finland, and Denmark. So they were 12 times higher than Norway, seven times higher than Finland, and six times higher than Denmark.
So the fact that Sweden had higher mortality than its neighboring countries, but still had zero deaths among children, it sort of shows that children are certainly not at very high risk of COVID-19.
They're not high-risk of mortality, but they are at high risk of being a silent transmitter.
That's true. That's true for influenza, because in influenza, it is the children and schools are driving force of the epidemic.
I know, it's true.
If, in terms of transmission of COVID-19, there's still a lot of things that are uncertain and unknown, but there's no indication that children or schools are major transmissions. The only study that came out of specifically tracing who was infected whom was from Iceland, because they did genetic testing on many, on many people, and you need genetic testing is anything, not of the individuals, but of the virus, to see who transmitted whom. And there was a study by Karin Stephansson from Iceland, and they did not find a single case where a child has infected an adult. Now, obviously, there are situations where children do infect adults. But as Dr. Martinelli was saying, adults are more at risk of being infected by other adults than they are by children.
I'm going to, hold on one second. Dr. Galvani, I actually had a, Dr. Galvani, I actually had a specific question for you. So can I ask you a specific question? Since I wanted to gain control of the situation.
Can I just address the last point that was made?
I had a specific question I wanted to ask you. I was wondering if you'd be willing to answer that.
No, I will. I am happy to answer.
Thank you.
But with regard to the transmission being higher in children, silent transmission is what I'm talking about.
Well, I'm actually going to ask you about that in another question.
I think the paper published in the National Academy of Sciences on that topic. And children will transmit more to other children, they'll transmit more to their teachers. So I'm not, as I said, I'm not so concerned about the complications or death risk to children, but they are posing a risk to teachers and to, for that matter, the families of, you know, the household contacts of other schoolchildren. So that, that is my prevailing concern.
Okay, so I'll ask you my final question then, which directly is regards to that question. Are you aware of any other research that contradicts the statement that you just made? Not that you agree with it, but are you aware of any other research that contradicts it?
Contradicts what?
That the children are actually spreading the disease as a silent spreader. I was in my primary care physician's office, and he was explaining to me, and I guess, you know, again, primary care physician, that your virus count is directly relational to your spread rate. So someone who doesn't have a high virus count, i.e. a child, would not spread as quickly as, so is there any research out there that contradicts what you're saying, or is all research in alignment with what you're saying?
There, there is a small study that doesn't have, that is not peer-reviewed and doesn't have sufficient statistical power that suggests children aren't, there are, they, in this study, which I disagree with because they don't have, the study wasn't done with sufficient statistical power. They say they don't find that children are spreading more. So they didn't find an association, which goes back to actually the point about that teachers aren't at higher risk in Sweden. Not finding a statistically significant result doesn't mean there isn't association if you don't have a large enough sample size. So.
So I have another question for you as well. You mentioned that you're in charge of modeling.
I thought you just said your final.
No, that was the final question I was going to ask you, but I had to move it up because you were talking about that. I have two more questions for you. So you mentioned that you're in, you do modeling, yeah. I'm wondering, how do you take situations of over-classified people into these models that we're doing? I know recently there was a motorcyclist that died in an accident that was classified as a COVID death. So how do, how do the models take into consideration those overclassifications?
Oh, sorry. Let me also address a point about higher, that the children, you said something about children, wouldn't pass on as much.
I asked you a question about overclassification of deaths. Is there any way you can answer the question that I asked?
That, okay. I did not address that particular point in my paper, my papers on COVID-19. But I can, you were saying that children transmit less because they have less virus? So viral load is correlated to infectiousness. But children still go through this peak of pre-symptomatic transmission, even if they then continue to remain asymptomatic. And that, that phase alone is, you know, before any symptoms have been developed. So this idea of staying home will help to control, staying home is not completely useless if you're, if you're sick, but it's, it's really, you could still have a vast outbreak. This is unusual aspect of COVID-19. And children don't have lower viral loads in that phase. So I, I don't know what, what you were referring to, but it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Okay.
Okay. Dan, we're going to move on because I want to have every board member have an opportunity. So in, to speak, then if we still have time, we'll go back, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. David, do you have any questions? David Ross?
I think they've largely been answered. It seems to me that Dr. Galvani and Dr. Kildoff were both agreeing on the idea that the children themselves are relatively unlikely to be seriously harmed from infection. The question revolved around the spread to other people. And I would just note what I think Dr. Galvani has already said, which is Sweden may not be the best test case to be looking at here, particularly if the way we're studying this is by looking at odds ratios, when you have a country that, that there was a moment in time when Sweden, Finland, Norway, all of Scandinavia, Sweden said, we're not going to do social distancing or any other measures. And everybody got infected, and they had much, much higher mortality rates than everyone else. So the countries that actually did put into place precautions did much better. So I honestly, I'm baffled, but I, I don't know if there's a question at the end of that, if Dr. Galvani or Dr. Kildoff wants to respond further.
No, I completely agree with you. It's, when you have such high risks, the odds, odds ratios, you need much more power in your study to, to show a statistical association, even if there is one. And, you know, they didn't shut down. They had, it's a demonstration in that shutting down and school transmission is, we know it drives flu epidemics. Flu, flu and COVID are transmitted in very similar ways. And, yeah, I guess I'm just repeating myself, but, yeah, I don't think Sweden is, in fact, it's, it's being used, it's, it's like the New York Times has an article a few days ago, Sweden has become the world's cautionary tale, that's the title, of what not to do. So the fact that they kept their schools opened and had a terrible outbreak, and by the way, their economy was also damaged, that's not what we're discussing today, is, I don't think we should use Sweden as our example.
So in terms of the overall number of deaths per million people, Sweden have, to date, have 549 deaths per million people. Connecticut has had more than twice as that, at 1,205 deaths. And of course, New York is even higher than Connecticut's. So it's rather surprising that a newspaper in New York would think that Sweden would be much better than New York, as well as Connecticut, did much worse than, than other countries.
Okay. This New York Times article is the one that also compares with all the other countries. And this is, and the New York Times article says that COVID deaths in Sweden per capita is, overall in the U.S., they don't compare with Connecticut, is 40% higher.
Yeah, the deaths in the U.S., Sweden has more deaths than the U.S. to date and less than, for example, than the UK, but it's less, much less than Connecticut.
Okay. Thank you. Joyce Shavers, do you have any questions?
Sure, I have a mix of comments and questions. You know, I listened to Dr. Kildorf, and I very much want to thank you for speaking with us today. And, you know, the focus on children and the mortality rates of children, it's all very interesting. But I think in the, and we as board members have to really focus on what's in the best interest of children. But I think in the face of a pandemic, we have to think more broadly in terms of the impact that we, our decisions have on the whole community. And so, while it's important to look at the health and safety of children, this issue is much, much broader than what just is happening to our children. The children go home, they're with parents, they're with grandparents, they're with, you know, older people. So I think I would urge everyone to kind of think more broadly than just the children. So that, that was just one thought I had. The other is, I wanted to point out something that's hot off the press, it came in from CAPE, and it was an email that was written to board members, what is the role of a Connecticut Board of Education in the COVID-19 crisis as districts plan reopening their schools? So of course, there is the requirement that we have to send in a back-to-school plan that has all three models that are planned out. But in this memo, it does say, the state has explained that considerable discretion will be given to districts regarding the opening of schools. You should work with your superintendent to develop the plan that works most effectively and safely for your students, families, and staff. And so when I see something like that, I think we are given the license to, I understand there is a state mandate and a push to try to get families to, students as well as teachers back in the school. But in listening to all the feedback, I mean, it was over two hours of very moving testimony that was, that was offered on Wednesday. And clearly, we have majority of teachers and quite a number of parents who are very uncomfortable sending their, their students or sending themselves back into the schools. And I, for one, do not feel very comfortable saying to someone that you are required to be back in school. And so I thought where we were headed, and I would like to ask the board for clarification, was that we were leading down the path of offering choice, because these are very personal decisions that, that we're all trying to make. And it's, you know, we could, we can, the data is always very, very important to help inform our decisions. But at the end of the day, I, I think that, well, I thought that we were leading towards giving families the choice, and ideally, we would be able to offer this, a choice to the teachers. Now, it's a bit tricky, because we need to have enough coverage in school, because there are some families that do need to have their children educated in school. There are lots of different reasons. And so my guess is that it won't be a large percentage. In fact, it might be a small percentage, but we do need to have coverage. And so it's a tricky alignment kind of question that we have to work through. So I guess the question for the board is, where, where are we headed? I mean, based on the conversation from Wednesday, and then I'm hearing things today, I'm a little confused and would like some clarification on that. And, and one more thought is, if we are to be in school, at least hopefully, there's some model out there where, you know, you have a small percentage of students there, teachers there, could we think about an outdoors model where there would be the ability to have enough distance and, and provide the safety steps that, that we would need to put in place in order for our kids to be educated at school? We have the space. I think we're very unique in having that in our community. So again, I would just go back and kind of get some clarification about where are we, where are we headed?
Bob, can you offer some clarification here?
I'll just quickly say that, just going again on what we have been instructed at this point, we are planning, as all districts are, for in-person onsite program. But we are also asked by the state to provide a distance learning component, option, if you will, for the students who are medically challenged because they can't come back for a legitimate medical reason, or for parents who want to opt their child, I use the word "opt," or to make the choice to keep their child home. So that is what we're gearing towards right now. And then, of course, we also have a hybrid model that if we're mandated to reduce the full number of kids in the school down to half of that on a given day, that's our other option. And then the full distance learning, if the rates of transmission go up so high that we're instructed to go completely to distance learning, similar to the spring. So that's what we're working towards right now. And that's, that's for the students and for the staff. I'll just simply say that we are very conscious, we are very understanding, we are also, we've been working and communicating to find out who needs to have that conversation. And that's something that we need to work through, a process that is, one that will be provided to us, that, that works for everyone, and then it works with some kind of consistency. That's, these are the trickiest things we're doing, and, and the, obviously, the costs that we may be incurring are because we are looking at trying to offer two programs, one onsite and a distance learning option for people to opt into, for parents to choose choice, if you will, on that. That's where we are.
So maybe I could ask a clarifying question about what you said. So it sounded like what you were saying in terms of the family, right, that if they had a medical condition, they could opt into distance learning, but it also sounded as if there might be some more flexibility? I mean, I just wanted, people are asking all these questions about whether they really do have the option. So do families have the option?
Yes. In the PowerPoint last week, it talked about the parallel track, where if a parent, either a medical, there's a medical reason for a child to stay home, distance learning would be provided. And on the right side of that slide, it said, a parent choice. And so that is what we're working towards. We're working towards, the goal of the state is to bring everybody back, but, but they're also saying, and they, they've actually used the word temporary in their description, and we're all waiting for more clarity, but they're saying, you also need school districts to offer parent choice, so if a parent temporarily decides to keep their child at home, or if a child has a medical issue that they need to stay home, or maybe a child's being quarantined because there was something that went on, and they had to spend two weeks at home for that.
Okay, so I'm sorry to ask the question again. I just really want to make sure I understand. So if, if a family doesn't have, if a child doesn't have a medical condition, they can still opt for distance learning? Is that correct?
That's, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. So then, coming to the teacher question, what, what are we saying? That they're required to come back unless they meet certain requirements?
I can tell you that it would be very difficult and, and very challenging for me to talk about all that, because there's many, many different situations. And that's something that we are trying to work together with the resources we have to work with teachers individually. I'm sure the union will have a perspective, the unions, we have more than one union. And we want, we want to do that in a thoughtful, considerate, compassionate, but also consistent manner. And so it would be hard for me, and that's something that I would like the board to have an opportunity to, to hear a bore about, and perhaps at some point along the way, but I don't have that for right now, tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Joyce. Jeff Townsend, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, first, I just have a question for Dr. Kildorf. Could you just let me know, just because I like to accumulate the actual information here, is the information that you shared on, it was like a Word, Word file or something, is that actually in a peer-reviewed publication I could look up?
You can look it up, everything there, which is references, but these are reports from the National Center for Health Statistics in the United States, from the Connecticut government, from the equivalent of the CDC in, in Sweden. And the last one, Table 5, is from a publication. And the last one, Table 5, is from a publication that is not a peer-reviewed, but it's an academic publication that's not yet peer-reviewed. The four first tables come from official government data.
Okay. If one wants to do any sort of analysis on the death total, I do think it's really important to understand the overall effects of the coronavirus on the populations, and we've had enough discussion of that. All right, I had another question, which was for our, actually for Bob. I just wanted to ask you, you've mentioned a couple times how you're awaiting further info from the CSE, Connecticut State Department of Education, with regard to the social distancing education part. I know you don't know necessarily what information that is, but it always seems like it's just a deferral, unless I understand that, you know, what specifically are they supposed to be telling you that would change anything about what one might do or prepare for that very important element of what we're going to be doing in the next year?
Thank you, Jeff, for that question. So first of all, we're awaiting information, not for the social distancing within the building, we're waiting for information regarding the parent choice component, if a parent decides not to send their child to the building when we open, reopen with onsite learning. So all superintendents are awaiting information, because the state phrased this in such a way that they said, this is a, the parent choice will be something that would be, something a temporary kind of a thing, they used the word temporary, they used the words that they were going to be creating the Connecticut Learning Hub, that would be a resource to go to. We all know that the Learning Hub is not going to be a robust kind of education for students staying at home, for parents who opt for that, or for the medically challenged students and the medically needy students who need to stay home. So we're just trying to understand, are they providing something that's going to be everything to everybody in the state, or do we have to supply it completely? Right now, we're kind of thinking that we're the ones who have to do it, but they may come up with something that they're going to do for all students and families who opt and choose to keep their child at home. So we're just, we just need more information. But I can tell you right now, our work this week is moving forward with creating expectations for our distance learning program, for how we make, how we raise the bar for what we did in the spring with all that we've learned from it, and to make it all it should be. And that distance learning program would obviously apply to the parents who've chosen to keep their kids home, or for medical, or just choice reasons. But we're waiting to see, the state talks about what they may be doing, or what they're want to provide for information. So that's what we're waiting for. It's about the choice of keeping kids home and what they might provide for us.
Sorry, just to clarify, Bob, did you just say you're waiting to hear whether the state is going to be offering the distance learning, rather than we would be doing it ourselves?
We are, we're not sure, we do not know, we are waiting to just find out what they are going to tell us for more information. They may, they may say that they're going to provide something to districts. They may say, this is what you should do, and for only so long. Again, they use the word in the guidelines as a temporary kind of an education choice. I mean, that is the Florida model, right? Florida offers a distance learning for all students in the state, that any student in any district can opt into at any point. So maybe the state of Connecticut's adopting a similar model, where you can choose to go to your district, or you can choose to go to the state-provided distance learning option. And that is the Florida model.
But we heard from Bob last week, and we looked at the website, the website of what is currently posted as the state offerings is not terribly impressive. So I'm going to be very surprised if I hear that teacher is going to abdicate our responsibility to educate our kids in lieu of what's fundamentally a link to Khan Academy, is the only thing I could find that constituted education on that site.
So let me again say that we are moving ahead as if we, I'm moving ahead as if there's nothing else happening, but we are expected to get more information. I don't know what that information is going to look like, whether it be Khan Academy, or it be something completely different. But we are moving forward in our planning with distance learning as if nothing's provided, that it's all us, that we're taking care of.
Thank you for addressing that, because that's what's important, is that we make sure that the education of students across our community is possible. And I don't think we can count on higher levels of government provision at this point. I just, let's go on to the next question, Ellen. I think we've addressed that succinctly enough.
Okay, thank you. Megan, Genevieve, do you have any?
Hi, Ellen, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm having a little connectivity issue, so we'll see. I guess first of all, thank you to all the speakers, very much appreciated for all of your expertise and thoughts and research on all these topics. I think, Joyce, you really articulated it quite well, and I agree with a lot of what you said. I think, Dr. Martinello, I really want to thank you in particular, I really appreciate your thoughtful review and suggestions and thoughts around what we can do, very concrete suggestions, and a lot of it seems like common sense. I think I do really want to put into our minds, thinking about this outdoor classroom concept. There's a lot of research to show, I believe, that the transmission rates are much, much lower outside. And actually, New York Times posted an article a few days ago, that's very interesting, talking about how, you know, when tuberculosis outbreaks in the past, early 1900s, they started using open-air classrooms. And basically, it was successful in no children, in this particular instance, were sick, or became sick. Another thing was a review of 7,000 cases in China, recorded only one instance of fresh air transmission. So again, supporting the outdoor model. Never mind that there is a lot of research to show that actually, outdoor learning can increase test scores and attention span, and actually decrease discipline issues. So I know that there's a whole host of reasons why there's concerns with that, weather and security and so many things, but we are, you know, dealing with a really heavy issue right now, and I think we need to try to think open-mindedly. And there are going to be instances for a time when kids go back, it might not be now, or maybe it is now and it's only a smaller percentage of students. But it does seem like the outdoor or open-air option, in terms of, I don't know, all the windows open, if that qualifies or not. But we do have the luxury of having, I believe, doors and windows in every classroom. And so the question is, you know, is there a capacity to get tents needed to help provide shade and protection in case it's raining, or whatnot? And, yeah, so that's just kind of one thing I really would like to be able to explore more. One thing I just wanted to say out loud, although I don't know if we're getting into this now, or focusing on our guest speakers, but was, I do agree that PD for teachers is great, especially like what they feel like they need training in right now. And let's not forget, I know, I see a lot of, you know, making sure we're getting training for teachers and handling mental health for children and whatnot, but let's make sure we get our teachers' mental health supports as well. And that's it for now.
Thank you, Megan. Jeff Hughes, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, just thank you to those who spoke tonight, really insightful. I also just want to lose focus on the task at hand, which is how to support our teachers' administration for, you know, in-person classrooms, the distance learning component. I think that should be quickly our new goal, our new talking points. So how we can support the admin and teachers in the opening of schools safely. And I also do support giving the three days for teachers for training. And I think it's an excellent idea to ease into the school year with a half-day for the first week.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike Strampler?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So thank you, I want to thank all the speakers as well. I first just wanted to say that this is more of a comment than a question, that it just, it just seems to me that there's no way around us taking on this issue of us, rather than the state developing a distance learning approach, and a very strong, robust one. And we're going to have families who are, we know we're going to have families who are going to decide on that as an option, and it's, and that's our responsibility as a school district, to provide a high-quality level of education for them. And not just now, I think that we can, we can take this as an opportunity to develop distance learning that could potentially be used beyond the pandemic. And I think we just need to take that on as leaders. And the state, we have one of the best school districts in the state, and I think we should take on this task of developing distance learning approaches that are top-notch, top-tier, and can be used potentially beyond the pandemic. And so I relate to that, but also, I think that we also need to provide in-person instruction. I also don't see how we get around that if we are taking our job seriously as board members. The reality is that there will be many families who aren't able to educate their children at home, they're not going to be able to be there to support their children for a host of reasons, some of which are, have to do with the nature of their jobs. So if you have two parents in the household, both working full-time outside of the home, how are they supposed to be there to provide and support their children's education? And even some parents who are working from home, they have jobs that are too demanding for them to engage their children at home in distance learning. So I think there will, and then there will be other families who will just decide that that's just the preference, they want to send their children to school. And so we need to find a way to do that and do that in a way that is as safe as possible. And that can lead to my question for, I don't know, is Dr. Galvani still here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And so you, you seem to recommend us placing our focus on distance learning, which, as I just stated, I agree with. But I, I'm curious to know whether you think the risk for, of COVID-19 is so high that we should not be considering in-person instruction options that could allow kids to come to school safely, like some of the ones that have been mentioned, outdoor instruction to the extent possible? Are you suggesting that even those options are too risky, given the state of COVID?
Well, the, the current incidence in Connecticut is admittedly pretty low and stable. But I think that's in large part because of not, kids not being in school. We know that kids are a driver of other respiratory infections. And... Yeah, so I think for the first several weeks, you might not see any cases, or you might see just a trickle of cases, but I think, and, you know, my work focuses on these kinds of projections, that you will end up closing down the school anyway, because you will have such rampant infection. So, you know, I think for a month or so, you might, the risk might be low, but they're just going to increase exponentially once kids are in school.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Mike. So, board members, I'm going to make another suggestion that we move the public comment, item 2.4 of the agenda, that it be moved to follow this discussion, so that those people who are on that wish to talk about this same issue will have an opportunity to do so. Do I have a motion for that?
Can I make a modification to that? Can we wish our guests by if they wish to leave, because public comment, we don't respond to, and if they need to drop off, to be respectful of their time?
Absolutely, Dan. Thank you for that suggestion. So I want to, I want, I do want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Galvani, Dr. Koldorf, Dr. Martinello, and Mr. Donald for calling in and offering their expertise to the board and the public who are on this meeting. You're welcome to stay on, and, but if you need to drop off, we totally understand. So thank you so much for your time and for sharing your expertise with us this evening.
Well, good luck with deliberation on this important topic, and I'm going to sign off. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koldorf.
I, I'm happy to sign off. I see a question popped up in chat for me, I'm happy to address that question as well.
I think we should only get questions from the board to our guests.
Okay, then I'll sign off.
Thank you, Dr. Galvani.
Bye.